Okay, welcome everyone to the 1:30 meeting Wednesday meeting. I think we're gonna, we got a bid opening, we'll start with that, okay?
Hi, this is Kelly Dumbrowski, Clerk of the Board. We have a bid opening for 28 100 by 200 scrim reinforced polyethylene geomembranes. When I said that right? The first one is from Ferguson Water Works. Their total is forty nine thousand fifty seven dollars and fifty one cents. The next one is from Northwest Linings and Geo Textile Products Incorporated. This one is one hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety nine dollars and fifty seven cents. Next one is for Titan Earthwork. Their total is thirty four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty four cents. And that's the conclusion of the bid opening.
Okay. What?
For Titan Earthwork, it was thirty four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty four cents.
Yeah. Okay, one other quick, quick thing, so, because we missed spoke at a previous meeting. Commissioner Weber went over to a WASAC meeting in Ellensburg. We noted as the nineteenth and twentieth September, it was actually the eighteenth, the twentieth September, just so we're on record that we have the correct dates.
It did turn out that there was a Timber County's caucus meeting that I wasn't aware of, that was the day before, so.
Yeah.
I did go on the eighteenth.
So we just want to make that correction on record. All right. Public Works.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mike Moss, Public Services Director. We just have a few items on our agenda today. The first one is National Hunting and Fishing Day update. That event happened this last Saturday, the twenty eighth, at the gun range. I was out of town, but Steve Nelson did send me an email over the weekend stating that was a great turnout, I believe around four hundred participants at the, at the grounds. Said that nothing but compliments of how the grounds looked and how it was ran by Cal's game and anglers. It was in coordination of Washington Fish and Wildlife, so they had trout ponds, you're able to shoot on the hundred or the three hundred yard range, but also trap shooting also, and archery range was open, so sounded like they had a couple food vendors on site, but it sounded like everything went really well, so they had good weather on Saturday also. So, good event for the county out there.
So are we aligned for high school competitions, has that started yet, or?
I know there, that's, that was a plan of having those two extra trap houses out there, is to get more local high schools in, in the trap competition, but I'll ask Steve, that's a great question, if they've actually got more going there, and I know there's a big county of, or a county event coming in the next couple of weeks, and it's filled up within hours, so I know it's very popular.
So I do know that Kelso High School is trying to get a group together because I received a flyer about it because my son attends the high school, so I know some of the high schools are looking at starting programs.
I suppose some would say there's a certain amount of irony for having schools sponsoring gun clubs, but. We are Cal's county.
We are.
My day, we just, we just had them in our truck.
Same here. Item number two, we have a picture of the North Hall of Justice parking lot that got resurfaced over the weekend and striped on Sunday. Did new risers on the storm drains and cleaned those out prior to the, the work done by Lakeside Industries, so we'll know during our first winter event, how well.
Rain tonight.
How well drains, correct, exactly, yep. So we'll monitor that and staff will, we have our vac truck with Public Works, so if we have any issues, we'll deal with that when it comes along, but they said they should be cleaned out, at least they meet Kelso's system.
Great.
So that's the last of our parking lots around HOJ, we did the other lots last summer, including HHS. So on the, on the books is the north parking lot here at the admin building, summer of twenty twenty five. And we're already, we talked about before in conversations with the city of Kelso, if we can do something in coordination with the streets, the street to our west.
Looks like they're getting their repairs and stuff done in time for coordination, I hope, I hope the two agencies can work together.
We agree, yeah, yeah, and you asked a question a few weeks ago about all the potholing around here and some, their staff reached out to the city of Kelso, it looks like most of that's for natural gas.
And, and since I park in that lower parking lot, I'm walking over those potholes all the time. And the patches, you can tell there's a depth still, so.
Correct.
I'm hoping that's temporary because we're gonna overlay the whole thing.
Yeah. It'd be nice to do it all at once.
And after all, the county does pay an awful lot of taxes to Kelso.
Late season construction projects. Working on Lakeside Industries to finish off overlay. Some of the projects we held off in the South County do the, the work that was done on I five. One of the roads we're working on with overlay was Green Mountain, and so I believe they're gonna try to do that.
If, they, I just talked to the construction manager before we left to come up here. He said they are anticipating being done with Green Mountain and Shirley Gorm today. They have moved up their grinder, they were originally gonna try and do a little climber of a road grind in the overlay on Friday, but because of the potential for rain on Friday, they have moved that up till tomorrow. So if all things align, we should be done with overlay by the end of day tomorrow. So, the other two projects we have going on that you have pictures of, there's the Eric Creek Culvert that is out on the Abernathy Creek Road, that is underway, they have installed the new arch and they are working right now on forming up the head and wing walls so that they can get out of the stream, re-release the stream into the pipe. And this is from a few days ago or a week ago. They have backfilled around, started backfilling around the culvert itself so that they can start moving traffic back on there as soon as they're clear of the wing walls. So that is anticipated for completion by Christmas. It's gonna be my Christmas present to you guys.
So, so the flow of the water in this picture is from left to right? I'm guessing? Or the other way around? I can't tell where the creek is.
It's, it's from right to left.
Okay, okay.
Based on the sign, that's how I.
So behind that generator must be the creek.
Yes.
Okay, Abernathy Creek, the other one is up, okay.
So they're moving along on that project, we did have to get an extension for our HPA because we were supposed to have the creek reinstalled by yesterday. But we had, got an extension because we're already out there working and are moving along to getting that done.
Just to satisfy my own personal curiosity, how deep do they drive these to, to hold the load they think it's gonna hold, do you know?
For the wall or for the culvert?
The wall. For, for the wall.
Okay, for the wall, so the other pictures are Hazeldale Wall, that's, they drove those. I don't know the number off the head, they're, they're usually, the piles generally are twenty to thirty feet long, the ones that we're installing. Yeah, so the, these are, these are actually board shafts, so they bore them down, they drop that H pile into a casing to about where the ground level is on the front, they fill that up concrete, and then they come along behind and drop those laggings.
Yeah.
Those lag panels, right now they've filled up behind the lag panels and they have started installing, these are tieback anchors, so they're big wires that they.
That's right, he's gonna ask, these holes must be for ties.
They're for the ties, and they're in the process of drilling those back in, so then they'll get them CDF'd in and we will do testing in about a week, this project is anticipated to be done in the next month by Veterans Day, they, they should be up and out of Hazeldale.
And you must be done with Hazeldale, seems like you've been improving Hazeldale for as long as they've been on the commission.
Oh no, no, we have other things going on on Hazeldale, as a matter of fact, we just.
Oh wait, I'm confusing Delometer with Hazeldale.
Well, no, we've got Delometer going too, there's always something to do on these roads. We got a couple big culverts on Hazeldale that we're looking for grant money, and Delometer, we have a couple big culverts that we did receive grant money and we're starting on those projects. So fall season coming up in the next few weeks, so you should be seeing the bid for guard rail because that's good winter work for contractors because they're done working all of these jobs, so the contractors like it, so we're going to do the unit bid contracts, which is our repair contract, and then we have a safety contract coming out also. We just received our comments back from WashDOT, so we're finalizing the contract with the safety money.
So I, I think it was three years ago that the Tower Road blew out at Rock Creek?
Yes.
Where are we with the other crossings that date back to a similar type of construction that might be subject to the same kind of undercutting from our wonderful Tootle River?
So part of what we have our summer help doing is creating a beautiful inventory and rating all of those, one of the engineers goes out with them, first couple of days they go out and teaches them how to rate them per a standard rating manual, and they are building a GIS layer and telling us which ones are bad and trying to guess what age they are, so what the condition is, what their age is, and their location. And so we're working on that database, we're about forty percent of the way through the county, so it's, it's been a multi-year project for us. So we have found a few culverts that, some of them are smaller, that they're road crews, so like twenty four inch diameters. They just did two up on Car Nine that we've discovered this summer that they replaced because it, we're in the dry. So they replace those and we're working on getting a better handle on our big culverts like that that are potentially being undercut.
And of course, we know. And of course we know, we kind of anticipate problems this year with, um, Tootle Park Road. That's where the, the big bend is and
Yes.
A lot of velocity there. Has there been much conversation in preparing the neighbors for a lot of threats or?
We haven't had a lot of talks with the neighbors. We do have our 30%. We have our survey done and are working on our 30% alignment. So we can start reaching out to uh, the three property owners that our proposed, uh, extension would go through. They have been contacted. This is what we're thinking of doing. Um, I can certainly have our right away agents reach out to the people at the down near the bend that would be cut off to tell them that, hey, we, we do realize this is a problem and we're we're working on an emergency plan and hopefully we'll be along. If we can get ourselves to somewhere between 30 and 60% design, if it goes this year, it's more of a okay, let's finish it as a design build project, work with the contractor, just get out there and get something in and do emergency permitting.
It, it is, it's, it's kind of interesting that there is a lot of money for emergency relief. We can get right away. But one could make the argument, we've known this is going to be happening for a year. Is it really an emergency when it actually happens?
Right.
And, and then we don't get the money because it's not really an emergency. It's, it, it is, I, it's, it's weird. You, you do the right kind of thing and you plan ahead, but then you
I agree with you. They should put some stock in our in, in the folks, you know, and, and say, okay, you see this coming up. It, because it saves you in the long run.
Yeah.
Saves all of us in the long run.
We could probably issue an emergency declaration now.
And, and we did apply. So, um, Washington State, um, Emergency Management had out their letters of intent for, um, flood mitigation projects and, um, building resilient infrastructure in communities is what they called it. Which will end up being a national competition, but we, um, applied with a letter of intent for that project and see if we get through their rating because that is the intent of that program. When you see something that, okay, this is a problem where we, oh, an area where we always have issues or this is an area where you could see failing that you can get ahead of it. And that, that is, so we were looking at that route. And that was submitted last week.
And, and that's kind of a new approach, isn't it?
Yes, it's newer.
New.
So we applied two years ago, um, for a different location with a out on Fish Pond Road where it goes under quite often. We were an alternate project. So we, we decided to pivot this year because this is a much more emergent need, um, to try for that project. So.
Have we not had? Since I've been here, probably even right before I got here, at least two, Tower, obviously. One where we knew culvert, we were worried about that thing. And then all of a sudden boom. And isn't Pleasant Hill or Mount Pleasant, I forget the name.
Yes, Pleasant Hill is out.
Same thing, right?
It
Pretty much.
Pretty much. Yeah. Um, that one was an older culvert that's just kind of failed because of high water. Yes.
It was just a matter of time. So
It wasn't a victim of being undercut by, by a stream bed like Tootle Park is. It just was an old aging facility. Cause that's, that's, there's not much of a grade there for that creek.
No, but there was a lot of backwater when it, um, wrote it out because of the way it sits. Salmon Creek comes down, crosses I five, runs parallel L five and makes a sharp 90 to go under this culvert. And at that sharp 90, when we had all, excuse me, we had a larger flow and backwater. It helped undercut that. And so, um, first, that was in a disaster that was declared in Lewis and other counties. So that, that particular culvert, we do have FEMA funding to replace and we're working through the FEMA pros- process to, um, get the permanent solution in.
Will that end up looking a little bit like the Eric Creek approach?
Uh, yeah, that'll be a no, actually we're doing a short span as a bridge on that one. Because of the flood plain issues out there, we had to get ourselves up a little higher, um, in that location.
And the Eric Creek is, uh, just a, a big half culvert, right?
Yes.
A span's not necessary because the, there's just not that traffic that would require that kind of
It's, it's the span. Yeah. The span is based on the, uh, creek flow, um, actually not the traffic. So, um, what you see in that picture, the, will be filled up to the bottom of the metal within a simulated stream bottom. It's just more difficult. Um, the scour was a problem at, uh, Pleasant Hill because of that 90 degree bend it has to take. So building the piers, the way where they're planning on doing it would is a better solution in that location than this. Cost wise, they're pretty close. Um, it's just depending on the location, which will give you the longevity.
So the highway engineer who designed that 90 degree turn didn't understand.
No.
Must not have understood.
It was a Wash Dot engineer because it was put in as a frontage road when I five went in.
Right. Not to cast aspersions on their professionalism, but they may not have had that much experience with.
With stream flows. Yes. And they, it is, things have changed. The state of the, I mean, that was the sixties and seventies. I think that one went in in the sixties. So things have changed, uh, how we view stuff because we used to manhandle things. Um, I mean, when they built I five, they cut off the Lewis River and created Horseshoe Lake.
I thought the federal government said you're not supposed to use phrases like that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Manhandling. We manipulate nature to our desires. Is that better?
And how's that work out? Rarely.
Rarely it works out and as we're discovering.
Yeah. Well, hopefully no, no further problems. I think we just have two temporary bridges, right? And they're both in use.
We actually have three temporary bridges. Uh, the third one, no, it's actually in use also because it is permanent temporarily permanently installed on the Ostrander bypass. Uh, so the bridge on that bypass is actually our bridge. Um, that's a twin to the one that's out on Pleasant Hill.
We got three temporary bridges. We need to get one.
Ostrander, another Wash Dot gift to engineering?
No, I think that might've been ours. Um, but it does back up from I five, but I think it's a, a Calitz River gift.
Curiosity, because I see, I think they have the, the drain, you know, where we had the sinkhole in Kelso?
Yes.
And it was traced back to our Leach A pipe. Has that all been settled or are we still working on that?
So the results of that was it was an unmarked storm drain.
Right.
That came from the highway. It was never marked either located when we built the road or, or the Leach A pipe, or when Kelso went out to do the locates. So it is now in between Kelso and Wash Dot because Wash Dot is saying, well, that road was a turnback. So everything in the right of way, that storm drainage is yours. So that, that is the, who, who's responsible has shifted purely to Wash Dot and the city of Kelso because it was never located. So if it's not located, we can't know it's there. So
Okay. So
You can't give something to somebody if you don't tell them.
Well, they told them they gave them the road and all the utilities, but I don't know. I haven't seen the drawings, so I don't know how well that culvert was shown.
Usually there's an inventory of what's in that drain.
Yes.
So it's fixed and they're just, they're just having a back and forth of who's going to pay for it.
And I, I can't remember. I haven't been over there. I don't remember if they've put the final patch of the asphalt on or not. I know they had a temporary and originally.
Did our pipeline break?
Ours did not.
Did not break. Okay.
We had no damage to our pipe and we made sure before they did the work that we, our Leach Eight was done because we turned it off. Cause originally they thought our Leach Eight line was what was leaking. We turned, um, off of the, the landfill. They pumped it down. We turned the Leach Eight line back on and watched it. Cause it takes half an hour or so from the landfill to get down here. And nothing came out of the pipe and you could hear it running. So then we just continued operating as normal. So no, there was no damage to our pipe.
All right.
So Mike, um, I wanted to go back to the Geo membrane bids. We had an engineer's estimate of cost of being well over a hundred thousand dollars. And you've got two really low bids is what's your approach to resolving? I mean, obviously I'd be suspicious of accepting the lowest bid if it's, if it's not the right product.
Correct. Yeah. That's, we hear them about low, no matter what the project is below the engineer's estimate. That's when you really check the numbers. See, see if the math adds up. They missed, missed a number here or there, didn't get the quantity correct along the way. So, and then if they did, then we'll usually have to dismiss those two. So we'll, we'll, we'll grab those from clerk of the board and take a closer look to see where we're at.
And having two that are so low.
Exactly. It was just one.
Okay. Something else is going on there.
Correct.
It also may be a vagueness in the specs and you can reject all and rework the specifications.
Who won the bid last? Was anybody on this list?
Yeah, I don't know.
It might've been Northwest Linings. They usually are the lowest, but they were the, I believe the highest.
Or the only responsible.
Might've been. Correct.
We almost saw kind of a similar thing last last week where one was way out. Remember? Phoenix Security, actually Phoenix was
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Remember how it was so far different than the others? And
We haven't heard
And it goes to the county people and they figure out.
Yeah. I believe that's the same with the roof at the annex. We had now ranges from 200 to $400,000 on one rooftop. So.
I just wanted to clarify that one of those was a, uh, bid from last week that we just received today. So I'm, I'm assuming that that's the high one. And the other two were for the high density, density polyethylene pipe. So the lower ones were for that.
Oh, so these were two different bid openings.
Yeah. And then it wasn't noticed because they look very similar.
That makes more sense. Yeah. So the two lower ones were the pipe and Northwest Lines was for the liner or for the tarps.
Yeah.
And the liners, the tarps were due last week.
Yeah, I believe they were last week and it, it must not have made it because we just got it today.
Thank you.
I thought we did something with tarps because we were, we were asking questions on how long they last and all that kind of stuff.
So it makes, but yeah, those are close together than those other two. This makes more sense. Yeah.
And, and thank you for putting Westover Drive on the list. I was not aware of that. A, and a planning gift that keeps on giving. You build a, you approve permits on a, in a canyon that gets built up and you've got excessive flows, right?
Yes. And, uh, so I spoke with, uh, Dan Hayden, who's at the area's supervisor. And they have cleaned the grates and they intend to clean them again before the rain starts. He is also trying to get in contact with the one property owner that he needs to get on the property to get the beaver dams out, but he has not successfully done that yet. So, and he was reaching out to Ms.
Etsy?
Yes.
Yes.
So yesterday he called to, to let her know what his plans were and when he'd see it, they'd see her out there. So he wanted to wait till right before the rain started to clean it out as best as he could.
And the beaver ponds are, it sounds like the same area than the past. And we've had permission from that same property owner to cross to go to, to do this, do that work. Uh, unfortunately they've been unable, unable to connect the last few weeks trying to get permission. Uh, so they left some, a business card on his doorstep this last, I think Monday or Tuesday of this week. If not, they'll keep trying till they get permission because we do get, I think they said there's two or three, they believe beavers working out there. So, you know, we have the contract to, uh, help, uh, relocate those beavers.
I'd say it's good news for juvenile salmon, but I'm not sure that's a salmon baron's dream. Pretty tough to get under the freeway. I mean, the highway.
Yeah. And the railroad tracks.
Hmm. I think that one's better than a lot. There is a gate on that one, to my knowledge. It does not have a flap gate on that particular crossing.
On the railroad side at the railroad?
No, there's no flap gate on that. Because that's not, uh, in a district, a Dyking district. So I do not believe that one's controlled.
I thought Ken Stone said that it was. But it might not be our jurisdiction because this would be state highway.
The state highway. Yeah. I'll, I'll double check that, but I, I, it was my recollection that that one, because it wasn't in the district was not controlled.
It is ironic to me personally because Westover Creek was the first big constituent complaint that I got when I took office in 2013. I did a lot of research and I even produced a slideshow and talked about all the stuff we'd tried over the years. And Ken was a great resource for, for that. But it was a while ago and we hadn't had any complaints. So I figured everything was fine. Then she said that the, the lakes had not, not dried out like they're, they were expecting. So thank you.
No, appreciate you passing that on. And we usually try to jump on that, but you know, our law view supervisor usually watches that pretty closely. We know it's one of the highlight areas or, uh, issue areas. That's why we already have the pre-made signs that we just have to flip down, say in water over roadways. Because we, we, we prepared knowing that each winter it's kind of unfortunately do that more. Yeah.
I think we're about maybe three feet in elevation too high to connect that drainage ditch with the one that goes by the, the old water treatment plant. Just a little bit too high. I mean, that would be an ideal to keep it from getting into the river at all, but like it has to back up.
Yeah. Once that river gets to a certain height, then it's, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have one item that wasn't on there is the coolness of this facility and also annexed the boiler replacement last week. There's a relay that that needs to be reordered and it's on, it's actually ordered and being shipped. I've waited to hear a confirmation if it's coming today or tomorrow. Hopefully the next day or two, get that relay in there. We'll get heat back on this facility. So I apologize. Probably a project we, we don't wait a while on the, on the, on this project, uh, actually got the uh, boilers delivered in February to Spokane. They came here, but back to Spokane. We had some issues initially with those. We had to make sure you get it tested and everything was good before we start the project here. We'd love to start this project a month ago. It just was timing wasn't going to happen. If, hoping to get in place here shortly. That way we get ready for the, the winter months. So we apologize. I'll actually get an email out later this afternoon to give the, everybody in this building an update of where we're at.
So you mentioned you're waiting for some equipment or some
A part.
It's not coming from the east coast, is it? Where the Von Sherman
Didn't sound like it. No, actually it's already been shipped and I think it came from a warehouse in Spokane. And they, they tracking it can't find it. So I, I think they may have just tried reorder it. I'll just drive to Spokane and get it if I have to.
Might be easier. I was teasing the clerk to wrestle her for a blanket and it became real obvious that I would lose that.
I know we had the portable heater on there earlier, so we apologize for the noise, but hopefully by next week you won't have to worry about it in the building here. If not, I'll go buy some Parkas.
Thanks.
There's always my office. It's 76 degrees in there.
In yours, no matter what.
No matter what, it's 76 degrees.
You wouldn't yell at your staff all the time.
You're right. I'll have to work on that.
I don't know what happens. My office is perfect.
It seems like no matter where I sit in the office, it's always the hotspot. So there, there's some theory that it's me.
I'm not even going to go there.
Anything else?
That's it. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't have anything till 2:30. So we'll just, I will recess till 2:30. I'm assuming we still have IT and risk manager coming in.
Yeah, I believe Sean from, Sean Roy from our office will be here at 2:30 also. In case there's any questions, I believe when they do any of the finance.
Okay.
So I, I was looking at, I was looking at the pictures from, from the, uh, Hazel Dell project and I can't quite make out the operator of that.
You know, that, you know, it, it, as much as I'd like it, it's not
It's not, it's not you. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to double check.
If I hadn't gone into an office, I would have been doing something like this because I always enjoyed that kind of but yeah, I know I was looking down there and said, dang it.
It's probably too small to take out in the Tootle to fix their issue also.
Yeah.
Chances are you'd have a better chance of actually helping the county out, but you'd have to join the union. Chances are you'd have a better chance of actually helping the county out, but you'd have to join the union.
Okay, back from recess, our 2:30 meeting. Looks like there's a few things under budget preview. Okay.
Yeah, so Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director, and so this workshop is pretty much dedicated to discuss cost allocations, those internal service departments that have costs that we allocate across many of the departments. So I've selected the top four that we have, and the first one is our motor pool. And basically, the motor pool has a methodology for the billing, and it's based upon inventory of our vehicles, and that's maintained by the motor pool. And then costs are broken into two categories, replacements and operations. And of course, our largest allocation is to the Sheriff's Department. And then we told, the total allocation is 1.5 million. And then we also have a placeholder for $105,000 to cover an any unexpected, a unexpected vehicle loss, which is typical for an annual basis, one, one vehicle.
This meth- methodology we've been using for a while?
Yes.
And we're all comfortable with it? We think it's, it's equitable? Fair? Okay. I probably asked the same question on all these, so.
Okay.
I just want to know that everybody still thinks it's equitable, fair, and does what it's supposed to do.
The, the allocation was redesigned in the Public Works Department because of complaints from departments for getting cost statements that were outrageously expensive. $250 oil changes. And I remember having, trying to have conversations with a cost accountant who was responsible for that. The first response was, don't worry about it. These aren't bills. These are just breakdowns. Didn't make any sense. And it was different the second time, because I had some other questions, and it came back, and it was totally different.
Yeah.
Very bizarre, so.
So they have restructured this.
They have some restructured, it's much, much more reasonable to, to assume, so. It was, yeah, $250 for, for an oil change, that was, that was.
No, it'd be on the pale. If they're Mercedes, maybe. How much diesel you gotta put in that thing?
Okay, and the next one that we have is the cost allocation for industrial accident. And this is our workers' comp program. And the methodology on this basically is based upon departmental labor hours is the basis for the billing. And then the labor hours are actually factored based upon the LNI risk categories. For counties, we base, we basically have three categories. The higher risk category is, of course, our sheriff's area. And then you have Public Works is in the second category. And then in the third category is all other. So, and it's quite a bit lower factor than the other two.
So, so jail, juvie, and sheriffs are all in that?
Yes.
Law enforcement category?
In the law enforcement category.
But the healthcare workers aren't?
Not, not, not in the highest category.
They don't really administer medicines to patients?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we, we're, for this cost allocation for 2025, we've looked at our claims, our actual claims, and we are estimating an increase in the cost of those for 2025 based upon the number of outstanding and open claims that we currently have. And also because some of the claims that we've seen in this past year have been more expensive, higher expense surgeries, higher, higher cost types of incidents. So.
That's about, that's almost 100% increase.
Yes. Our other, other costs that are in the allocation includes, we have an excess worker compensation policy, like insurance policy. And we also have our LNI self-insured assessments. So we still have to pay into LNI an assessment, so those are also included into the cost, total cost.
We, we have a few departments that have very low labor costs. And so being able to pay up for a large accident claim, for example, becomes an impossibility.
Correct.
And I think we had one before most of you were, were with the county, with, with the weed department. And very, very serious injury that occurred. And they were getting these huge bills from the county to recover those costs. And it.
Yeah, this, this model doesn't, doesn't utilize actual experience. Or in the model, it's based upon hours, and so a small department is going to have a smaller number of hours. It is going to share in the total cost at a lower level than a department that has a large number of hours.
So in the, in the risk element for LNI, you mentioned the Sheriff's Department is at one category. But there are an awful lot of workers in the Sheriff's Department who aren't commissioned officers. I mean, they're not deputies, but they're civilian employees. Do they get treated differently in terms of the coverage? Because obviously their job's not going to be as dangerous as being out on the roads and confronting the criminal element.
I'll, I'll have to look at that. I think, I think we placed all of the Sheriff's Department hours in the higher category, but I can look at that to determine. Because we're accumulating hours by a department, and we're not accumulating the hours by a department, and then further by classification. We'd have to do, we'd have to do another cut to the, to the hours if we did that.
And, and then, and then in public works, would you include the, the engineers in the higher risk category? Or their, their job isn't going to be nearly as risky as folks working the heavy equipment? I mean, I, I get the, I get the part about heavy equipment and so on, but it's, it's kind of like the same thing. You've got civilians in the Sheriff's Department, and you have the non-construction workers and heavy equipment operators in, in public works.
Yeah, Scott Killian, Risk Analyst. How it's set up right now is actually, it's actually the risk class is assigned to the position, each position. So anytime a new position is created, risk management gets involved, and we assign a risk class. So if it's an administrative role, they'll get the lower risk class. If it's a sheriff deputy, then they'll get the sheriff law enforcement risk class. Anybody else would be assigned to the general staff.
But I think our hours are just by department.
Our hours are just by department, yeah.
That's.
That's part of the problem.
That is part of the problem, I would think. I mean, I certainly appreciate the idea that you identified jobs that are more risky. But the departments aren't uniform, I mean, that, that risk factor. And if you're, if you're talking about a, a huge increase, which it looks like you are, that, then that inequity becomes more significant.
I'll, I'll see what we can do, but right now the hours are by, they're by department, and they're not further segregated by their risk class. I mean, we possibly could do it, but I'd have to look at the programming.
And again, I would, I would say that there will be some pushback, especially since you're treating the risk level the same for everybody in the department. Particularly, those two departments seem to be riskier, and unfair, I mean.
So, yeah, I don't really disagree with that. So right now, it looks to me like we estimate hours that they'll, they'll be out. And that has some history component to it, times whatever the, the dollar amount is of them being out anymore. And that's how we come up with the, the claims? The estimated claims?
On the estimated claims, we're looking at the number of claims that we have outstanding right now, and just estimating an increase over this current year over what we had budgeted.
But to reach the 450, there must be a dollar amount you assign to each claim?
So the estimated severity cost for each open claim, the open claims that we have right now are about 58,000.
Okay, so you're just taking, you've taken an average of what each claim is costing you, and, and said there's going to be an increase of claims, and the average cost is 58, or whatever that number is. That's where we came with the 450.
Yeah, so we also took into consideration what we still currently owe for those claims.
So I, if I understood Commissioner Weber, then when you bill the departments, right now, everybody's treated the same, but we're thinking there should be, some are more risky than others, and it should be adjusted by, by risk factor.
Yeah, the, the departments.
That makes, makes sense. I don't know how you do that, but.
Yeah, so we have, we have billed out, for example, the Sheriff's Department hours. We factored those to be at a higher number because of, they are the higher risk. But what the question is, the Sheriff's Department hours include hours for sheriff deputies as well as some of the administrative, administrative staff. And so the administrative staff, because they're in the Sheriff's Department, are getting allocated at a higher rate.
Yeah.
Than they, if they were in a different department.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting it's not, it won't create some complications to try and figure that out. But I think you would agree is probably, if we can figure it out, it's a better way to do it.
Right.
Or more equitable way.
Yeah, if we can, if we can get the query to work, it would be a more equitable way. But I don't, overall, in total, I don't know that it's that significant, but, but we, if we can figure it out, I'll, I'll look at it.
It's probably worth a look anyway, right Kathy? And then if it's insignificant, we say, well, we've done the math, and it really doesn't. I, I can get, is there a correlation, this excess policy is something we, we buy?
Yes, that's something we procure.
Is there a correlation between that and the, the claims? I mean, is there any kind of, do we self-insure up to an amount or anything, or to help hold those down, or?
Yeah, so the, the, the excess policy kicks in. Yeah, so the 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 excess policy kicks in, I think, at two, two hundred fifty?
Two hundred fifty for your typical employee and that's a little bit larger for a sheriff. For law enforcement, I think it's, I want to say it's like five hundred thousand.
I guess my question there would be if would it be less expensive to buy a policy that kicked in that? Hundred, just pick a number, a hundred versus. Charging the departments. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, looking at the limits of the policy and seeing if we want to change those limits.
Benefit to bringing that down to to departments? I I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I I don't know what the answer is. I don't know when we when we elected to go self insured with L and I. If part of the agreement required certain excess policy limits, I don't know. But we can look into that.
Yeah, and then the last thing I had on this third party contractor is this. Because it it looks like it's different every year. So is it is it a per case? Or is it a, it doesn't look like it's a set yearly bid. Hey, we'll do this deal for thirty six thousand a year. It must be per case.
So I'm going to have a disclaimer here. I did not prepare twenty twenty three's cost allocations. I inherited what was in the files, so I don't know how they arrived at their numbers. So for example, that excess policy, I think they just estimated. I'm I'm looking at actuals and trend. Third party contractor is a fixed contract. And it has a it has an escalation built into it for every year. That's why you see thirty four thousand for twenty four and now thirty six thousand.
So you so you can put confidence between twenty four, twenty five. Take credit for.
Yeah, I don't know how much confidence I could put in twenty twenty three.
I get that. So I think there's some some questions because it is quite a raise. And if it is, it is. I mean, that's what it is. But I think it we need to be able to, if we get called from a department saying, hey, I I think this is unfair. I think we need to have the ability to say, well, we've looked at this and this, we have tried to find.
Yep.
That that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And as far as the the methodology that's been used. They've used these this hour, the work hours by department. And the the risk category for quite a bit of time. And so it's it's been, this is consistent with how it's been done.
My guess is it's going to go up. It's insurance is almost.
Yeah.
It's just what we see.
That's that's all on industrial and workers' comp. Okay, the next one should be our risk insurance and risk management allocation. And on this one, we have, this is where we're part of the Washington County Risk Pool Assessment. And so we have our risk pool assessments. They provided those estimates to us in late July. And unfortunately, those are going up as well. The rate change that they were proposing. Was it a twenty percent rate increase? The good news is that we actually, it also part of the factor is how many labor hours we have. And our labor hours went down in proportion to the other counties. Our deductible factors stayed about the stayed this about the same. And our modification factor, which is based upon experience, actually went down just a little bit. So. But we do have that twenty percent increase in the rate that we're being charged.
And I could be wrong because I hear, you know, you talk about a lot of different areas. But is this one too that they they've done some reserves and they're trying to build back reserves?
Yes, they're trying to build their reserves back. And they have been doing this over the last several years. Last year, we actually had a thirty percent increase in the rate. And so, but they they are, they use an actuary. And they try to determine what do they need to be holding as a reserve. Because we're actually, we have some excess policies there that they've procured. For, I believe, over twenty million or twenty five million. But then they still have self insurance needs, but they're trying to make sure they have the reserves for the long term. It can take on some of these cases, it can take, they're saying, and it looks like up to. Anywhere from two to five years to close a case on some of the tort and litigation items.
I believe we've also, because the the costs of these keep going up, I think a lot of the counties are part of this. And didn't we talk one time, there are a couple of counties decided to go their own and it hasn't gotten well for them? Is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, some of the larger, larger count, actually the larger counties are on their own. But I think there's twenty, is there twenty something still in this? Over twenty counties that are still in this Washington risk pool.
I I think my point is that it it makes sense to stay with them because some have tried the other and it's really not gone well.
We also, as part of this, the largest one is, of course, is just our regular liability program. But then the next largest assessment, pool assessment is for property. And so we do allocate the property assessment to facilities. But we also are tracking to an expenditure code, a bars code. To the major facility based upon the square feet of that facility. So we we have some history of what we're charging out by facility. In those cases, for example, I know that included in the jail rate, daily rate. We need those, that kind of information to compute our daily jail rate for billing purposes. So we have that detail level included in this allocation.
So so doing it that that way, when public defense moves over here, does there? Does their rate get reallocated? Does it change that?
They're currently.
I don't.
They're leasing, they're leasing right now.
Yeah, they're they're not part of this because they have a lease space.
So so.
But they'll be part of the.
They will become part of this. So there will be an allocation going to them. So I would assume that would.
We could do that. We can do it based upon square feet for the annex. Because I have the annex separated out in my allocations.
Well, if they come in and you're not part of the allocation, other departments are going to say, well, I'm I'm paying for the OPD. You know, you know what I mean?
So we'll have to look at that when they move. In the risk management management totals, of course, then this model, very similar to the. Industrial accident model is based upon hours worked for a department. We don't do a factoring on this one. This one is just based solely on hours worked by department. And then the other item in this year, we have a transfer out to liability claims. Which is the fund that that covers the litigation type expenses and things of that nature. Because we're we are responsible for the first one hundred thousand dollars on the liability program. And we transfer traditionally about a hundred thousand. This year, I'm recommending that we transfer three hundred thousand because we've had. Additional settlements, we've had additional expenses. And so the hundred thousand is not going to be sufficient. For the things that we've seen in this past year. And then an overview of how this works works out to the allocation. The predominant amount is charged to the general fund. And that's that goes to the non-departmental account, about thirty four percent. This is the current year. Facilities received about twenty one percent of the total. And jail and other funds that have some billing, daily billing rates, they received about thirteen percent of the billing. Special revenue funds, which includes, for example, road fund, received nineteen percent of the billings. Other enterprise funds, nine percent, service, other service centers, four percent. And the total for twenty twenty four was two point nine million. For twenty twenty five, the numbers didn't change that much because, again, it's based upon total hours. And so general fund thirty four percent, facilities eighteen percent. Jail and other general funds sixteen percent, special revenue eighteen, enterprise ten. Service centers four, and for a total billing that we're estimating is three point four million dollars. And then I have a little chart to break down how that how that the categories on the expenses are and what they look like. On a trend basis. So for twenty twenty three, our insurance assessments, all insurance and assessments. Were about one point four million. And it's gone from one point four to one point eight and now to two million dollars for twenty twenty five. And then property. Actually has went up because of the rate factor that they increased. But then for us, it went down just a little bit because on property. We actually saw insured value. Our insured value as a percentage of the total went down five percent. And then our base rate went down just a little bit too. So that that's good news. And then all other expenses, including the transfer out to liability claims. Went from about half a million to twenty twenty five. Up to seven hundred and five thousand dollars. So that that breaks out where are where the major categories of our expenses are for risk management. Any questions on that one?
I'm going to be a lot of pressure in twenty twenty five. It looks like that there's going to be additional expense out there. Right, from everything I've seen.
Yep.
So I'll be upfront with you. I'm really strong at trying to hold the line of what we spent in the past year. So people need to sharpen their their pencil on other areas that they can they can cut. I'll just be upfront here, tell you that that's my goal, whether I'll get there or not, I don't know.
Yeah, I've I've started reviewing all of our budget submissions. And I'm I'm looking at the differences and I'm. And some departments have already gotten some emails from me, just asking the questions. And just inquiring about in general, any areas that increase significantly. I'm asking them to help provide an explanation. And to relook at it.
I'd much prefer that it's their ideas that they come with instead of having to institute our ideas.
Yeah, and I'm at this point, I'm just asking.
Right.
For them to review and and look look for their explanations. So.
Kathy, on the second to last page, our overview of two thousand twenty five billings. You have the different boxes. Tell me again what can what the special revenue funds, the enterprise funds and the service center funds are.
So on special revenue funds, the largest one there is road fund. So you've got road fund, you've got our health and human services funds.
The grant, the grants.
Grants and things like, and then you also have our criminal justice. Our mental behavioral health tax is a special fund. So some of those.
Those are the restrictive sales tax, law and justice, and of course, behavioral health is gone, so. We have a pot of money in there.
Yeah, but we still have expenses in the the fund still.
And the enterprise funds?
Enter enterprise funds predominantly is your landfill. Your water sewer. Those are some of the predominant ones there.
Is is the.
Type in and.
Business type.
Is the.
Building and planning.
Building and planning. Oh, how about the tourism department?
Oh.
Yes, they're in the they're in the enterprise funds.
They're in the enterprise fund.
And then in your service funds, this is the other departments like IT. Is one of the predominant ones. Risk management's an enterprise fund, but they don't bill themselves. But your IT.
Your office?
No. Or general fund.
HR.
HR's general fund, service centers. Yeah, provide internal services, but the largest one is IT. So.
Thank you.
Okay, so then the last one we have for today is. The information technology fund has a cost allocation. I think Travis was going to join me because. This is our largest allocation for our cost allocations. I save the best for last, I guess. So there's some small changes for this allocation for twenty twenty five. We we both, both our IT director and myself reviewed all of the expenses for accuracy. And then the telephone operations, we're proposing a change. Those have been billed out monthly. And we're proposing that those changes be wrapped, pulled into IT. Because IT has been responsible for the replacement of the system, which was already part of the allocation. But the operational costs weren't. There's no significant changes to the total dollar amount for telecom. That will be allocated to the departments on this one, but we're just for making things more efficient. We want to pull them into the IT allocation. And we also want to do their billings annually versus having to do billings every single month. And have the departments pay those billings every single month. So.
So what I I'm I'm hearing you say is we're not adding another bill to the departments. We're just going to bookkeep it a different way.
Right, right. Try to be more efficient and less costly. We also went through and updated the the details for those. What we're reserving for long term assets, for infrastructure, things like that, other capital items. And we we updated all the details related. And we, we updated all the details related to that reserve accumulation that we're doing. And that was reviewed by our IT director and got, got good guidance on what we're doing there. So the methodology for IT has been that it's based upon looking at the number of devices and the number of FTEs for a department. And it was a fifty-fifty model, fifty percent of the allocation was based upon the department's inventory. And we have performed an annual inventory, I think, since I've been here every year, they've done is in the summer, with the summer intern helping. They've done that. And I think they've improved those inventories each year. And so this year, it includes desktops, tablets and laptops as well. And I was going to try to collect that data on how much, if it's changed drastically. In some departments, it did change because, for example, in the, I'll use the Superior Court as an example, they had a number of computers that were previously not included in their inventory because they had been purchased by AOC. And so now they're included in the inventory. And the same is true for some of the other departments that had AOC computers. But they, they were the ones that had probably the largest number. And then fifty percent is based upon the FTEs of the department. And then we also.
I would assume the reason for that, Travis, even though we didn't purchase, they got to purchase the computers through a different funding source, we still maintain them.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
So that would, I guess that's the.
We, we still maintain them and now.
Process.
Yeah.
How you would allocate it is because we still, when they have a trouble with it, they probably call us or call you and fix it.
Yep. And also, the AOC is no longer replacing those computers as they previously had done. So now it's all back on the county to, to replace those computers at the end of their life.
Do we build departments? We build, I know we have a fund that we build up and when our equipment expires and we have this fund we can do with. Do we, say, Department of Justice was getting their grants from a different place to get those, would they be contributed in there or would they not? And does that change now, one way or the other?
Well, that, that's one of the reasons why the inventory went up because those were paid for by the AOC before. So that's, it's similar to what you're saying. They, they paid for them as a grant, basically.
In this allocation, there's also built in for this replacement fund or whatever.
Right, yes.
Call it, yeah.
Yeah. And, and pretty much on a regular basis, they've spread that out. And so you'll see there, they have a budget for minor equipment. And it's, it's been anywhere, it fluctuates from five hundred to four hundred thousand a year to utilize to replace desktop and laptop inventory. And then we include in the bill for IT, of course, a capital replacement and for long-term assets. And we move those funds over to the reserve so we can accumulate them because they, they aren't going to be replaced every year. They're like seven years, ten years, servers, switches, some of those items. So we build up a capital reserve and replacement account to take care of that, that, those types of cost. Then for the IT portion, we did split the IT portion up in our allocation. And we're allocating IT expenses to the departments based upon the number of extensions that they have. And so that's, and then we also are, in addition to that, we're billing them for the replacement cost of a telephone system for the future, to have funds available when that, the life of that system is complete. And we're doing that over a ten, we're doing, estimating a replacement over a ten-year period for that. And then there are a few other direct line charges that will be billing the departments. They're separated from the allocation, but they're included in the annual billing. And then, like I said, bills will no longer be performed monthly, but on an annual basis. And then we also have a, a long distance. And on the long distance, we've looked at this and we've come to the conclusion that it's about, it runs about four thousand dollars a year. It's about, averages about three hundred dollars a month. And it's been billed to the department and we've had to have software and people collect that information. And so those costs exceed the actual billing. And so we're recommending that instead of billing departments based upon their utilization of long distance, to just include the long distance in total into our billing or, or allocation methodology and just make it a little bit more simpler. And, and so therefore saving some, some manpower and be more efficient. On the, on the IT portion, there's a lot of different costs. And some of the, the predominant costs are the, of course, the IT salaries and wages and benefits. They're included. All of the software licenses and maintenance for major systems utilized by the entire county have been included in the allocation, including the phone system. Those specialized software systems that a department operates, they're not included in this allocation. They're part of the department's expense. So and then desktop replacements are historically been done every five years. And traditionally, that's run about four hundred, five hundred thousand a year. And then we also have other expenses in IT for supplies. They're, they're recipient of internal service department billings, training, professional development are all expenses of IT department as well. And then, of course, the capital replacement reserve for the telephone servers, infrastructure. So.
Throw on my Commissioner Mortensen hat for a minute here. On it, the desktop replacements, four to five hundred thousand, we set aside per year to do these things. And as he would say, are you sure we deem them every five years? If you did that out to seven, does it make a difference? Is it, is it drop it to three to four or do you even know?
Yeah. It, it will drop the number, yes, but I don't know how significant it will drop.
I'm not a, a tech guy. I'm just throwing on his hat. Does that even, is that even reasonable?
It's certainly possible. It's technically possible, but I believe what you exchange in cost savings and direct expense for hardware, you'll make up for in labor. And it may not be directly known because it takes people longer to reboot their computer. It takes longer to open applications, longer to get response time, et cetera. So those additional costs are hard to quantify. So I would recommend until I have more information, we follow what's the industry standard, which is five years or less.
The, the industry standard is based on the industry's estimate, right? So there is a self-interest in making sure it's shorter rather than reasonable. And I have no idea how you measure how often you need to, you, you need to replace. I, I know at home, we use computers a lot longer than five years before we change them. Although we usually wait too long and then they stop working, but it, it seems a little rich to, to change them every five years. The other. Are we ready for other questions or you have another?
I have, I have another, I have another slide to actually go over the, the numbers so that you can see how they've changed. The next slide has, has the components, cost, cost components that are allocated. So you have salaries and wages, which is one of our larger items. And then we have our computer software and professional service contracts. And that's estimated for two thousand and twenty-five to run as a little over two million dollars. And we did have some increases that occurred from two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five, particularly in the, and I'm not familiar with some of these softwares, but I can say what it was. I think it's the, the support for the VMware went up approximately eighty-four thousand dollars. And then our cost for Veronis went up. And that's because we moved to, moved to SaaS in two thousand and twenty-four. And that cost us about seventy-five thousand dollars increase. And then we had some Microsoft increases, basically truing up the numbers on our licenses and that was about twenty-five thousand or yeah, it was tw- fifty thousand, a little over fifty thousand for two different things. So a number of increases in our software. But overall, the rest of them, we were estimating about a seven percent increase if we didn't have a specific contractor number yet, so.
Just a minor correction, Veronis did not move to SaaS. So we might be able to pull that one back down. I think it was considered, but we didn't make that move.
Question, and boy, I hate to ask this because, you know, people say, well, he's looking to do something different here. But I think we're financial people and we're supposed to ask these type of things. When does it, at, the software increases keep going and going? At one point in time, does it make more sense to have a third party service that you where I worked, we, we kept all that stuff in-house and it finally got to the point where we turned it over to our the people that, you know, ran all of our, our, our stuff to do and they kept the software up to date and we paid a fee. Wh- when do you get to a point where it makes more sense to pay a fee versus doing it all yourself? And I don't know if there's an easy answer to that. And I'm not trying to get anybody's job, but I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, that question can be understood a few different ways. So I'm not sure if you're asking about licensing or labor. I'll assume that the context is licensing. And we could obtain licensing for some products from service providers or we could obtain services that include software licensing. When there's an economy of scale, that may make sense. Or when there's variable utilization, sometimes that makes sense to be in a pool of resources. Based on what I know today, I don't see any obvious opportunities for that. Our utilization isn't seasonal, for example, where we would acquire a large amount of licensing, maintain it throughout the year to satisfy an end-of-year retail industry, for example. So I think because our licensing is relatively flat and because we have a, a fairly reasonable scale and we have opportunities to buy off state contracts that are negotiated at a larger scale, I'm not sure there's an, an easy option for procurement of licensing through other avenues.
Okay. And, and actually, that's the answer I was looking for. I, I wanted to know that you're actually looking at those type of things and obviously you keep that stuff in mind, so.
We also, we have some, Travis and I have some recommendations. Right now, we're, we're moving to the reserve account for the long-term capital replacements, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And, and that, and then we have the details of what that makes up. And so looking at that and then looking at the total replacement value, if we expanded it, you know, what's the, the worst-case scenario if we had to go back out and procure all these items? It's about two, two and it, let's just say two and a half million dollars approximately. Our current balance in our IT reserve account, I'm, I'm estimating that it's a little over five million dollars right now at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. And so I guess I'm jumping ahead to another slide, but anyway, anyway, you know, that's an area where maybe we study this a little bit more and maybe we don't move. We don't do that reserve transfer this year. At least the two hundred and twenty-five thousand or maybe more, the three hundred thousand of it. So that's one item that we looked at, that we might be able to reduce those costs for this year. The other thing is that we've been, we've benefited from some ARPA dollars for the last couple of years that were set aside to help us pay for some software licenses. Well, those software licenses were included in our cost allocation. And, but we were getting some revenue back to cover those. Well, that revenue has, wasn't offset in the billings. And so that's about three hundred thousand dollars that we could reduce the, at least this coming year, reduce the annual billings because we have this other offset for it. Eventually that goes away, but we could at least potentially change that for this two thousand and twenty-five. And then there's some other little things like, like, like I said, we wanted, on the long distance, we could possibly cancel the software cost. We looked at a, a software that would improve our billings for long distance. But when we analyzed it, we said, okay, it, it's only four thousand dollars. Why spend, you know, fourteen thousand dollars on software to bill out fourteen thou- four thousand dollars? So those are some of the things we're recommending that we could do to actually reduce the cost at least for two thousand and twenty-five. And then to continue to look at the reserves every single year to make sure what we have in there is, is what we really need for replacements and for unanticipated emergency needs, so.
Right. Budget stuff I tend to ask, usually I sit here and I, I listen more and I ask, but I'll tend to ask more questions. And what I'm looking for is to get thought processes of how you're looking at things and, and I what I'm hearing is, is you're, you're on the right track. You're trying to, budget is all about looking where everything's coming from and, and where we can save and where you have to add. Where, you know, just doing the right things. Sometimes you get into a, I don't ever want to get in a mode where we're just going to add, add, add until you get to the point where you're in trouble and you've eaten up reserves. And it's obvious to me that you're looking at other areas, so I do appreciate that.
And the, Travis had asked me to look at this current year with MNC. Okay, you know, we budgeted that we were going to, we build every, we build out for, a little over four million dollars. And then did we, are we going to spend all of that? Are we going to have some savings even this year? And it looks like, I just, I did a quick estimate, we have about nine hundred and eighty thousand left in budget capacity. But I think we're going to spend about seven hundred and fifty thousand of that. And then if there's some other, you know, things crop up, it, it's not much cushion. So for the current year, I think we're pretty close to what we budgeted is what we're going to spend. I mean, we have some savings and some vacancies, but I think we're, it's, it's pretty close.
Yeah, and the other thing I, I would ask, and I think Commissioner Weber kind of asked it in that first one. Anytime there's a significant change, I want to be able to explain that to, to departments and, and stuff. I just think that's an important thing to do. A lot of people can accept it if they can see why it is, but if you, we can't explain why it is and it, it gets difficult.
Are there any other questions?
Oh, of course.
Yes, of course.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused about what the ending fund balance is for the department. Cause I've seen two different figures.
So.
One is, one is $900,000.
Right, that's the, that's the daily operating account. That's where the salaries, the software maintenance.
And you said you needed two and a half months.
Yeah, I was, I was just as trying to be conservative and because of cash flow and things like that, that trying to keep a reasonable fund balance in the IT operating account. And then in the other account, which is the IT reserve account, that's the one that has over $5 million right now. And next year, we're slated to replace the rugged laptops, about 42 of those. So next year, we are going to budget and expense in that account for doing that, replacing those rugged laptops that are with the sheriff deputies. But then after that, we don't, right now, until further study, right now, there isn't anything that we're budgeting as major expenses out of that 5 million reserve account.
Well, in, in earlier conversation, I was pretty much convinced that we are significantly at risk in terms of cybersecurity. I didn't see that jumping out as new program or new, new, new purchases to make sure we are safeguarded. So I guess the question I have for, for Travis is, is the $300,000 a year over three years that we've taken from ARPA and just parked it? Is that something that you could support using to resolve those cybersecurity needs? That you've been pretty eloquent about saying, we really need, we need to enter the 21st century with our, our IT system.
Yes, there are definite deficits or gaps to remediate in cybersecurity and risk. It's my impression, and I don't know the details of the ARPA funds, but just the limited information I, I have and recall, I believe that we've procured and implemented several products for that ARPA funding. So it's not like that money was parked per se. I think that money's there to reimburse expenses that we've already incurred for things like the Verona software or Duo or malware, malware bytes, specific security products that have been implemented or improved in the past couple of years.
Okay, I'm just looking at the language that says that it hasn't been used to reduce billings. As a result, the fund balance grew a million dollars. I'm thinking, well, we need to spend that for, for something that, that is of significant improvement. The whole purpose of this portion of ARPA funds was to kind of fill in the gap of funds that didn't come in during the depths of the, the COVID epidemic. Of course, our revenue didn't really go down that much, so, but here, to me, I look at that as, as what we need to do to do the kind of upgrades to make sure we're not at risk and I, I'm, I'm hoping that you feel moved to make sure that the budget you are going to submit to us will outline the strategy to achieve the goal that you say we're, 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 we need.
Yeah, I, I would say about the next year and that risk reduction, which includes cyber and disaster recovery for other catastrophic events. I kind of put those two buckets together under risk and mitigating that. We addressed that in a couple of ways, so one is, we're trying to fill and in the process of working to fill a position for a security engineer. Certainly, the expertise that person brings and the input they bring will help guide what we do in the next year. One of the things we did in the reserve here is outline more specifically than what was done in the past, things that will be used to both upgrade the existing infrastructure and possibly supplement existing infrastructure for disaster recovery purposes. So that will help mitigate some of the risk as it relates to other security products and tools. We didn't necessarily, the, the budget currently doesn't reflect that, but I'd rather err on the side of not putting in, putting it in there now without knowing exactly what those tools or costs should be, knowing that we have a reserve that's relatively healthy that we can draw from if and when we're ready to do that. I feel like we'd be in a better position to do that throughout this year as we learn more and then adjust in next year's budget.
So I, I definitely appreciate that, but I'm, I'm a firm believer that our priorities are reflected in the budget that we adopt. And an ending fund balance means it's a savings account. If there's a hidden agenda where we, we spend down the savings account on purpose, then I think we're not being as open and transparent as we should be to the public. I don't think the taxpayers want us to have a huge amount of savings. We need an adequate amount. I mean, absolutely. I mean, we've got this understanding that the road fund needs a, a pretty substantial amount of, of reserve funds and then they've been implementing that and, and they've demonstrated this year that that's, it has come in very handy because we've got those emergencies that are hard to predict. We've had the, the description of the need for IT upgrades for security reasons. I would just as soon see dollars set aside each year. You can roll that money over, that budget allocation over to the next year. We've done that before. In fact, I believe when we financed a totally new tax finance system, tax collection finance system, we showed it in, in, in multi-year so that we were very clear that this is a program priority. I, you know, I don't like hiding a lot of stuff in ending fund balances because A, for our, if we're planning to spend it, then it's not truly reserved. But anyway, as, as far as I'm concerned, let's put in a cybersecurity improvement program. So we can dedicate some money for it. If you don't use it, fine, but it, it demonstrates what our, our priorities are. Anyway, my, my one, one suggestion, I really appreciate the breakdown of descriptions that you've used to, to help us better understand all these different programs. It is pretty complicated. Rick's partners don't know what's going to hit them. And it does take us, I mean, you're still really, I mean, you're learning every time. I'm still learning every time. So it's an ongoing process on this whole budgeting process, uh, program. But I, you know, if we've got priorities, I think the budget needs to reflect it, yeah, other than, yeah, I mean, eight, eight point two is one month, 16.4 is two months and two and a half is going to be closer to 20%, roughly. Don't want to do math in public, but somewhere around that. And that, that suggests we've, we're saving money, so let's, let's identify it and let's improve that security.
We used to, and I don't know if government accounting is different, but to Commissioner Weber's point, say, we didn't know if we were going to, when exactly we were going to spend this, but we knew we wanted to do this, so there would be a, a placeholder set for this specific item. If, if we were able to get to it, then this money would go to that specific item. Maybe that's kind of what you're talking about, where, where you don't know exactly what it's going to be, but you know, you want to work in cybersecurity. So we're going to put a placeholder of, we think it's going to cost us a half a million dollars, whatever, in there. So, so people, when they look at it, they go, yeah, the county realizes they got to do this and they've set this aside and it's not sitting in what you call a savings account. I don't know if that makes life easier for you or not, but.
I think it's good direction, meaning I'm happy to operate with that direction and yeah, I think we'll take another look at it.
Thank you. So Kathy, if, are, are we done with the IT portion? You're, you're through, right? You walked us through the rest.
I'm finished. I don't have any more slide shows.
Okay, so I had a, I had a, a topic that fits in this whole subject of cost allocations. It, it seems to me that the general fund is assuming a much larger share of the operating costs of the county than it should. There are funds that come in that are restricted funds, can only be used for certain things. And so they're not part of the general fund. The vast majority of these allocation programs are general fund. And we dip into those restricted funds as is legitimate. I mean, I don't have a, you know, question about how we've done that. But it seems to me the costs of the, this office, including now the public records research that our staff is doing, your office providing department assistance across the county, HR absolutely dealing with all the employees. They're all 100% general fund and it seems to me that's a little out of kilter. I think we should be freeing up some more of that general fund to do projects. And, and those three programs should be allocated like we've done based on a, whether it's per FTE or square footage or percentage of the budget. I'm not exactly sure how to do that, but I, I would feel much more comfortable that we're allocating the resources appropriately if we reduce our heavily reliance on the general fund. General fund's going to be big anyway, but the restricted funds, the employees who are spending the restricted funds don't hesitate to use our time. You know, public records report time, your time and HR's time. And, and, and that's right, and it should, but then the allocation should reflect that as well.
There, there is, they're not part of the formal cost allocation, but both, I discovered this late last year, af- after we had already done a lot of budget work, that we do allocate part of my office, the budgeting staff, and we do allocate part of HR, not across all funds, but we allocate some of our expenses for HR and the Office of Finance to the road fund and to building and planning. I'm not entirely sure why just those two funds were selected. But we, and there's a cost method allocation that you listed. It's a little different for HR. It's based upon number of collective bargaining agreements, number of employees administered for health insurance programs. And then for my department, it's, I think it's based upon the actual fund balance of those two funds in relation to all funds. But it's, it's a very small segment of allo- an allocation that's done. It's not a lot of money. It's approximately, I think it's less than, or around $100,000 a year that's allocated to those two, two different funds. So it's actually less. It's 100,000 that's allocated, but only a very small, like 13% of my office is allocated to those funds. I, I don't, I don't know why, but, but it's, it's been done for several years. And it's also been reviewed by the auditors because it's an administrative cost and to allocate on a consistent basis and based upon a methodology, consistent methodology. So it, it passed an audit several years ago by the state auditor's office. So, and it's continued to take place, but it's not part of our formal cost allocations because it's not done to all departments. If that makes any sense. No. Yeah, and only those two areas have been allocated.
Unless there's a reason, and, and there may be some state laws that prevent that. I mean, I, they, they talk about central services and I've never quite understood what that is, although it supposedly includes IT. But financial management, I would think would be a central service, so certainly the stuff that we do, I mean, the effects on the departments, so.
HR's included in that, that allocation and so is my bu- budget staff. But I don't know, there isn't any notes or anything like that about any other offices. And the auditor's office also is, does a cost allocation based upon utilization. And so they're also in the cost allocations, but it's, it wasn't, I just gave you the top for ease of time and everything, I gave you the top ones. The auditor's office does an allocation too, so. And it's about 400,000 a year that's allocated, but they allocate to all departments.
Because they're providing auditing services.
Yeah.
In, in terms of paying for the central administration, as, as I call it, it seems to me the agency that may be left out of the formula is Health and Human Services. Yeah, you know, I think we spend a fair bit of time dealing with Health and Human Service programs and they're not, they're not paying for our, our time. If it is something that is reimbursable under their rules from the grants that they receive, we should be getting it. I think that's only fair, but I know you have plenty of free time to look into these things, so.
Yeah, so, so I'm doing, I'm doing a little research already.
I don't, I don't know if that makes any sense to you and.
I think there's certainly some of that area that certainly makes sense, you providing service to the whole county. When you talk Health and Human Services, what comes to mind is the Health Board, where, where's that all get allocated? Cause that's, that was a legislative change and I don't know if we've ever made an adjustment to that. I don't know if that comes out of HHS budget, since that's where it's supposed to be.
Think travel, when they go to their conferences, that comes out of Health and Human Services, but everything else is your office, right?
While we're talking about them, we're getting requests for their own laptops. So if that were to happen, would that be an HHS thing?
Well, I think so.
Yeah, they cur- they currently don't have their own
account.
Fund or expenditure fund.
We haven't budgeted anything for anything like that.
We, we do that for the Board of Equalization and the Appeals, the Boundary Review Board.
Yeah, those two have their own fund, their own department. They're part of the general fund. And so they, they have their own expenditures.
This is, was a discussion I was going to have, but Commissioner Morton's not here, but on Monday, I think we need to, because we're getting some requests and if, if we want to give them their own laptops, where's that going to come from?
Well, I don't think we do that for any of the other, the other two boards that we have.
Yeah, I, I don't think we do.
And if you, and if you did, I would have to allocate some of IT to them.
Well, I know, it would, it would change a lot of things, so that's why.
Yeah.
I've been getting the request and I know the staff's been getting requests, but it really needs to go to the commissioners and that's what I was going to bring up on Monday.
Well, I mean, it seems to me that that's, that could very clearly be a, a, a budget page listed with Health and Human Services. I mean, that, that does kind of make sense. A, a, a budget page listed with Health and Human Services. I mean, that, that does kind of make sense. Sort of like Board of Equalization. Well, that's, that's in our department now, but it used to be with building and planning. And, uh, boundary board, boundary board of adjustment. Has kind of been a poor stepchild, kind of shifted around all by itself. I mean, it's, it's really planning. A planning function, so. But they don't get, I don't think they get computers.
No, no. They don't, only departments with computers or departments that have county employees.
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting, and I'm just saying it's been asked, so. But it's, it's not a Rick decision. It's a commissioner's decision.
The other. The other perspective in terms of how general administration is funded. Might lie within some sister counties. Rather than trying to reinvent the wheel, there, there may be a. County that's already figured it out. Or if you get a steady answer, no, the state auditor won't let us or state law doesn't allow us. That makes the questions much simpler, but.
Well, I'm, I'm involved in a little bit of research on that right now, so.
Okay, great. Well, I don't like the idea that we've been talking about 20% and 50% increases in some of these programs, but I under, I also understand. Our own insurance has been going through the roof as well at home, so I, I shouldn't be surprised. It's, uh. It's, uh, there's been an awful lot of property damage, a lot of storms hitting.
Yeah.
So, across the country.
I agree with you. I'm not, not surprised.
On, on a, on a better note, our. Our tort claims against us aren't nearly as, as bad as when we had, I think at one point we had. Four deaths that were trying to be adjudicated, four or five deaths. You know, the numbers aren't that high at all now in that category. Thank goodness.
Okay.
Anything, anything else? We, next week we'll have. More budget workshops. And the budget workshops that we have coming up, um, we have two weeks. That we have time slots for departmental, um, budget discussion. And, um. And then after that, we'll. We'll have, um, behavioral health is one workshop. We have. A massive one for. Public service, public works. Um, they'll, they'll include their stuff as well as. Some of their, their capital plan.
Give Sean a bad time.
Yeah, so, um. Yeah, so we have a busy October.
Yeah.
So Sean, just a word of advice. I know you, you do a great job of illustrating your, your capital requests. Get it in a picture, one of those big machines.
They did the last presentation. I think you superposed my face over in, in one of the, the world or you guys cracked me up. You know. I know you, you get asked a lot of questions around budget and I know sometimes it's not always comfortable to sit here and have to go through some of this stuff, but. This is extremely important, important, and, and I think these conversations, uh, bear fruit and, and it's the only way you can. You get to the end game, so. So we appreciate them. I, I appreciate what you do and, and I appreciate departments that are willing to come in and sit down and we talk over this stuff.
So, so I made some, we, Travis and I on IT are making some recommendations. Can I circle back to ask if we can implement? Cause we build out the departments in the preliminary budget. That we put in.
You're, you're talking about these allocation changes.
Yeah, ITs. Can we go ahead and reduce this year's allocation? There's the two major items. Not, uh, doing an additional reserve transfer this year. It's about 300,000. And then. Also reducing the bill for the ARPA offset that we're, that we're expecting in 2025. So we're, reduce the overall bill about 600,000.
Here's what I, I would ask for you. I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't, I don't think Commissioner Weber has a problem. I would ask that you run it by Commissioner Mortenson and make sure he's up to speed with that. But I think you're, I think you, he'll probably tell you the same thing we're telling you. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, I'll certainly do that. And I guess the question is, on the other changes that we discussed related to cyber. Um, how, how or when do we proceed with that? Do we? Make that change and come back here with the result of that? Or do you want to address that individually? How, how would you like to proceed there?
As far as setting aside some money for that, I, I would ask how, how you do accounting. Are you able to. Uh, designate a, a fund that says, hey, this, we're going to. Set aside this or cybersecurity funds. We don't know what we're going to spend, but we think it's somewhere in this range, so we're going to set this aside.
Yeah, I would.
Just so it doesn't look like it's a, a savings account sitting out there that nobody's doing with.
Yeah, I would recommend the IT reserve. Is for, um. Things like that. And so we could utilize the IT reserve. And in the past, you've utilized the IT reserve. I think for some additional consulting that was done when I first got here. It was about 150,000 dollars. So using earmarking part of that in the budget as an expense line. Um, on the IT reserve account and pulling it from the fund balance.
So it would, it would show like cyber, like one of these, whatever they show. Line item, they show cybersecurity and we're going to reserve such, such dollars. I think that would satisfy what Commissioner Weber was asking for.
I think the question then is, just using a fictitious amount, just for illustration, if it's $100,000 that, that we believe we're going to accrue in separate or additional cybersecurity expenses. Do we want to allocate that to the departments or do we want to pull that from the reserve? Um, I, I would propose at the moment, based on what we've done and review of the reserve. Because the reserve seems more than adequate, that we don't bill additional funds to the department. But we'll still detail out what additional expense we expect to have in the next year for cyber.
That work?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you. You see anything? I don't see anything online. You don't see anything? Anything else? Okay, good meeting. We will adjourn.